You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the October 21st meeting for the Trail Creek Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www accesseslaporte county dot org.
Good evening, everybody. It is seven o'clock and we're going to call the October meeting to order. If everyone could rise to join me in saying the pledge to open the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. And welcome to the meeting. Council, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from September of 2025? Any changes or corrections, anybody? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the September meeting? Thank you. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And the fund report is next. Crystals, are there anything that we need to know on the fund report? Any changes or anything that stands out?
So in your copy for the MS4 where it says the negative, it has been in the negative. We fixed that today, so in that report, the next report, it will not be in the negative anymore, so.
Does anyone have any questions or comments on the fund report? Hearing none, can we have a motion to approve the fund report?
I'm moving to approve the fund report.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is just for your information is the bank statement. And again, that's just for your information, folks. That all matches up. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding the accounts payable register?
Just a question. Just a question. The service sanitation for the playgrounds, the porta-pots. We're paying for those?
Yes. Those are after the contract is done for baseball. Those become our responsibility to pay for.
When are we getting rid of those?
That should be, I was gonna say November, because we'll have them for trick or treat.
Okay. Okay.
I had a question on that also. What's the $75 charge for the basic port service?
What page are you on?
I'm on page, well, the pages.
I know, I always cut it off on the.
Hang on.
Looks like four.
Four? Yeah. It's the first one for $75. I understand there's two months, Cogden and Nelson, and two hand sanitizers. But I don't know, it says handicap restroom Nelson Park basic port service.
From my understanding from the bill, I think that's for when they empty. You pay for the actual porta-pot itself and then you pay to get it dumped.
Empty. Oh, okay. Okay. And so Cogden has never been emptied.
That doesn't sound right.
Yeah, I would ask them what that might be for.
Is that for the additional, because they had another unit put in?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. You, because they only had, you only put the one in for the Fall Fest, correct?
One extra.
One extra.
So there's one handicap and then one just regular.
That's the basic pot. That's what that is.
Even though it says handicap, it's not a handicap.
It says, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. This one says the basic port. Yeah. Okay. Good to know.
Okay.
Okay. So we figured it out. Any other questions or comments regarding payment of bills or the AP register? Can we have a motion to approve the payment of the bills?
Motion.
And a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Do we have any correspondence this month?
So yesterday, we had several phone calls come in regarding the Fall Fest, saying how great, everybody had a great time and they can't wait for next year. Some requested being earlier in October, so maybe it would be a little warmer, less, and some didn't have any opinion on when it was. But maybe over five people have called and said, just to say they had a great time and thank you to the park board.
That's fantastic.
And I got an email from Drew Telikson saying what a great time he had too.
That's wonderful. Hearing no other correspondence, we'll move on. Do we have anything with MS4 this month? I don't believe so. Okay, then we'll start your report, Mr. Willoughby.
Nothing to update.
Good evening. Okay. Short and sweet tonight.
Any updates on any of the houses?
No updates on any of the houses.
The, were you, I thought you were looking at the house that was, it's been going on for a bit, next to Evering Church. What's, right?
Yep. I have no, I have no update, as I'm not the only holder of information and enforcement, so, and that's not really passionate to Chief or anybody else.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
But no, I do not have any updates on that.
Were you, was there something that was supposed to be?
Yes.
Okay.
Nothing, nothing is, nothing has progressed to allow me to give you an update tonight.
Okay. But is something in motion, or?
I, no. My hands are a little bit tied. I'm, I'm, I'm the attorney here, but I will take responsibility to say there is nothing in motion, so.
So if we wanted to get something in motion, other than?
I will take that responsibility and reach out to those.
If you would.
From whom I believe I need assistance.
If you would, please.
Yes. And again, that's not, that's, that's not the marshal, so for anybody who thinks I'm speaking in code, I am not.
No.
That is, I just want to make sure that's clear, that he's not holding up anything here.
Okay. But if you would get that into motion, that would be fantastic. Thank you. Moving on to our town engineer.
The main report to give is on the CCMG project. That's the contractor met the substantial completion milestone, actually exceeded it, so they were done before they even needed to be substantially complete-wise. They still have some remaining miscellaneous items to take care of. Some stop bars on Johnson Road, a couple of other pavement markings, some remaining sod and a little bit of linear grading to take care of, but otherwise, it's miscellaneous types of things. And I think they're gonna wait till they submit one pay application, so they haven't even received any payment yet. So you haven't even paid them for anything yet, but I think they'll probably just do one pay application for everything and take care of all that, close it all out at once, probably. So I would expect maybe at the next meeting that would happen.
Okay.
Sorry. Did our curbs get replaced?
Curbs.
Right around here?
Oh.
Parking blocks.
Yeah. Blocks, curbs.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I think, I'm not sure, did they, were they removed right there? I know there was some striping that needed to be done out there.
They're still sitting out there, they're just not moved back.
Oh, the bumpers. Oh, okay.
Is that what you were talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, that would be one of the, you know, miscellaneous things that they still have to take care of, but we'll definitely pass along, that's a priority item, to get them, get that taken care of as soon as possible.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? No? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to the park department. Good evening, Katrina.
Good evening.
Don't forget to turn your mic on, please.
Oh, yeah. Thanks for the reminder.
Hello. Okay. Well, first of all, I'm terrible at names and pronouncing names, so bear with me. And I'm just gonna read this because it's a lot. So first of all, I just want to talk about the Fall Festival, and it was a huge success. The weather was gorgeous considering the terrible reports that we were getting. It was the complete opposite. It was great. It was beautiful. So that was really good. We also heard a lot of positive feedback ourselves when we were at the festival from the vendors. I went around and asked what they thought, and they all had nothing but good things to say compared to how it was during the Centennial Festival and then the first Fall Festival.
Hold on, Katrina, I think your battery's died.
Thank you. Turn that on.
Right, it's gonna throw me off.
Lou? Okay. So, yeah, and they were, they were telling me about how they thought it was very organized, and that was like really good to hear, because we worked really hard on making sure everything was like streamlined and organized. So I want to make sure I give out my thank yous. It would not, the festival wouldn't have been possible without everybody involved. So first of all, I want to thank our park board members. I know not all of them are here. Katie Stahoviac, Megan Beach, Sue Clausen, and our park board liaison Laura Sains for their hard work and dedication in organizing the festival. Their communication and teamwork made it possible for us to develop a well-thought-out plan and implement it on the day of the festival. I also want to thank the council members, Laura Sains, Warren Schott, Brian Vito, and volunteers Jerry Sains, Paula Oshinsky, and Paula Oshinsky for their time and dedication. They completed numerous essential tasks before, during, and after the event. They took care of everything from marking vendors' spaces, directing vendors, helping with games, and helping out at the welcome tent, and then setting up and breaking down in the hail. Warren could speak to that, he was drenched. He just gave up. And then I would also like to say, say thank you to Dave and your crew. You guys went above and beyond, like, we didn't even ask you all for all that, and you, you really did a lot for us, like painting the lines and putting out the cones and making a huge arrow and stuff. And so, yeah, and, and a lot of the vendors complimented us on that, and that was due to you. How it was so easy to come in and get checked in and stuff in the flow of traffic. So thank you for that. And then I would like to also thank Steve and the police department for helping out with parking and traffic. And then I also want to say thank you to Crystal and Julie for the tedious task of managing our finances and updating me daily about vendor and sponsor payments. You two played a crucial role in coordinating logistics, vendor management, and communication. This ensured smooth operations. Additionally, I want to thank you for coming in and making sure that all the money was accounted for. And, yeah. Next, I want to thank our sponsors. I'm not gonna include those, the different levels, I'm just gonna say all our sponsors' names. Bri, I can't, Bri?
Braji.
Bri, Brahe?
Braji.
Braji, Nelson, and James Law Firm, Woodruff &amp; Sons, Arnett Construction, Who's Your Brush, I'm sorry, I'm getting tongue tight. Who's Your Breast Friend, Hassan Associates, Cape &amp; Ace Hardware, MC Doors, and John Link for Judge. Also, our in-kind sponsors, Repro Graphic Arts, The Beecher Newspaper, the Street Department and Police Department, and Petsmart and Brant's Pet Store, all gave us in-kind donations. So thanks to these generous donors, we were able to plan a memorable event and contribute to the community and Nelson Park Playground fundraiser. This all meant a lot, and we hope that the sponsors will continue to help us for like future events. And then for our earnings, we earned a total of $4,532. That is from sponsors, vendor fees, the silent auction, t-shirt sales, and donations. So that was a huge, that's like a lot of money. That's a big dent in, you know, our playground fundraiser. We did use all $2,000 of our community events budget, and we did go over $408.17, but that was covered by sponsorships. So that was really helpful. So then, if you subtract that from our total, we made a profit of $400, or $4,123.83. And I would like to see if I could get that transferred or, what do you call it? Ennumered?
Encumbered.
Encumbered. For next year into the playground fund. I'm not sure how that all works, what I needed to do to approve it, because there's sponsors, there's vendor fees, shirts. Oh.
Do we want to talk about this now?
Whenever you're ready.
I think we should.
Just a quick note, then, as it relates to the statement. All of the Fall Fest vendor fees were put in the Park Non-Reverting Fund 2300, and you'll see that on your fund report that there was an influx of cash as well then. And when you look at your revenue reports, Crystal made a specific revenue line for that, so that you could track vendor versus specific donations made for equipment projects, which is another 1,500, and then separately aligned for the grant, the 25,000. So all of that money is already held in the Park Non-Reverting Fund, so the balance from this, those three items is about $30,000 of revenue coming in. As well, the fund had a balance already of 14,400 something. So you'll see the total there in that fund specifically is the 44,000, which would be available for whatever upcoming projects you want to use that for. So there's really not a separate reason to encumber any of this recent revenue. It's already reserved separately in that separate fund just for the park.
So the non-reverting fund means it doesn't go away, it just keeps growing?
Okay. So, um, excuse me if I don't understand this, but like, you said we have like $44,000, but that's split between different allocations? Is that it? Or could we spend that $44,000 just on playground equipment?
It can be just on that. The only thing we'll have to do is officially, is officially have an ordinance process here where, right now, that money wasn't in the budget specifically as approval for spending. There's some paperwork that just has to happen, but the cash is there, and that cash will stay separately there for the parks. Certainly, you may have other projects, you know, next summer, so hopefully there'll be some balance. I don't know what the equipment's gonna cost, but.
About 50,000.
Okay, so you're close.
We're very close, yeah. Wow. That's shocking. That's really good news, so.
The only thing is, is you have to remember, this money won't be there, you'll have to accumulate it again.
Yeah. Yeah. But it brings us closer to our goal.
So there's no like emergency, that kind of thing, so you have to just make sure you spend it wisely.
Okay. Awesome. Wow, that's such good news. Okay. And so then, the other thing I wanted to bring up is, we have a ton of these very cute Fall Festival t-shirts, and we're, we discounted them to $15. So if anyone is interested, I have them in my car, and I'm planning on leaving some here with, with Crystal at the town hall, so people can come pick them up from here, or they can contact me at my email, katwarner89@gmail.com. That's K-A-T-W-E-R-N-E-R-8-9 at gmail dot com. And I might have an easier time getting it to people than picking it up from here, just because we have weird hours at town hall. So, yeah, I'm totally fine with delivering the shirts to whoever wants them. And then, next, I'd like to talk about the mulch project that we had going on. So both the playgrounds have fresh mulch, thanks to several volunteers, including Warren Schott, Don and Debbie Rogers, Katie Stahoviac, Sue and Skip Clausen, and Brian Vito. Warren really went the extra mile by spreading it the day it was delivered, and then going back at 7:00 a.m. in the morning and hitting it again. And then I would also like to thank Katie for providing refreshments. So we just want to tell the park board is thankful for that, and, yeah. And then, we kind of just talked about funding, but this is a little bit more about the playground funding. So, you know, we received a $25,000 grant from HFL, but we need to raise another 20,000. I subtracted the $4,123 from that, so like $21,000 we need to earn. And the grant requires that we have to have the equipment installed by September 30th, 2026. So we will be discussing fundraising options at our next meeting, November 13th at 6:00 p.m. We will also start the application process for, to start a nonprofit Friends of the Park organization. A nonprofit status is required for many grants, which we're not eligible for because we're a municipality. So having an organization that is nonprofit would make it possible to receive more grants. And then, so we're also looking for sponsors for the playground. If you're interested in it, please contact me, or you can find more information on the town website, including a flyer that has a different sponsorship levels. And lastly, our fifth park board member resigned, so we do have an opening for another park board member. I don't know if Chris is up for that.
Is the fifth one the one that was appointed by the school board?
Yes.
Okay.
Ally Mann resigned also. Did we miss that the last one?
But she was replaced by Sue.
She was replaced by Sue.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
Just have to go through the process.
Okay. I know, it was probably a pain, but.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay. And I think that's it.
Fantastic work.
Thanks.
I can't say enough how great the Fall Festival was, having gone myself. And the mulch looks amazing, so.
Good. Good. A lot of people were involved, and a lot of people made this actually a reality, so they all did a great job.
But a lot of very hard work and organization on your part as well, so don't sell yourself short there.
No, it's time work.
Thank you.
Can you leave, email me a copy of what you just read, please? Yes.
Amazing job.
I have one question that was brought up during our events, we were just talking on the sidebar. Do we know what the plan is for the old concession stand here at Condon?
Then I'm aware of, I don't know that we had.
We talked about it. That one Amanda was on the board. She wanted to bring it back to life and fix it, but it's pretty much beyond repair. It just needs to go, I feel like.
Do you mean this one over here? Yeah, this building does need to come down and be demolished.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we were talking about the work party or?
The what?
Some kind of a, right, some sort of a work party or demolition party or?
That would be fun, yeah.
So let's, let's hold off on that thought, because I think there may be more involved than what you may know, because there is power that goes to that building, so we're gonna have some other issues to handle.
That's not a problem.
Before we just jump in and start doing things. I don't want everyone's hair to look like mine.
We're gonna come in one day, it's just gonna be gone, Warren's working on it all there.
So with that, we're gonna move on to our building inspector, who is not present this evening, so we don't have a report from him. Anything for planning and zoning?
So we had our first meeting. I don't remember what the date was on that, though. It was on Friday, the, it was September 19th. We don't have the amount of board members we need, so we didn't have a quorum. There needs to be some action taken by the council to appoint members, correct?
Yes, and there's a formula to it that I sent, and I can share it with everybody again, just to, to make sure to.
Thank you.
There's a particularity to some of it that is beyond your control and ultimately dictated by state statute.
So we weren't able to nominate any presidents, vice presidents, secretaries, anything, because we didn't have the proper amount of board members appointed. So we still need some more board members, so we just had a meet and greet, put out some information, and that's where we concluded with our, our first meeting.
Okay.
Just on the heels of that, I would say the press to find more members to fill in is probably, it isn't urgent, but I did, I did speak with, I did speak with a representative today of Woodruff that is the principal behind that development, and I think they're closer to getting the approvals they need from Michigan City through the sanitary district, so that will be imminent, whether that's, you know, a month or two, but certainly something that's gonna happen, I would say, over the next few months.
So definitely moving on, getting the other board members appointed is, I would like to get it done before it is urgent. That way, we have people in place, and we can do what we need to do, and we need to do it.
Okay. So we need names first, and then we can?
Right. Well, and I'm gonna refer to Mr. Willoughby as far as the state statute and who needs to be appointed.
I'll send that to everybody with the summary of who we have and what's, who's needed. And then, there are some members that can, that. Five that can serve on some of those as well. And in fact, by your ordinances, dictate some of those.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Then we will move on to our police department.
Evening. The only thing I've got is, first of all, I want to thank everybody who's dropped off some bags of candy to the town hall. We did fall short of our goals, we had to go out and purchase the majority of it, but we are still looking for some donations. If anybody's interested, please reach out, be more than happy to accept those donations. We still have to get the hot chocolate, looking at about 30 gallons again this year, roughly. I think we upped our number, pieces of candy, we're over 3,000 now, so we should have plenty of candy. I was gonna mention to Katrina, Mike, if you want to bring your shirts out Halloween evening, we'll be out at, yeah, we'll be out at the Nelson Park with our tent, so feel free to come out. And also, I just want to, for what it's worth, yeah, it was a great Saturday, was an awesome event, so congratulations to all of you. Very well put on. That's all I've got.
Okay.
Anything from you guys? As always, thank you for your support.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Baker. Go with our street department next.
One way or the other. Just start with a couple updates real quick. Our vehicles are all have been serviced. I gotta go get one of the dump trucks tomorrow, but NDOT inspections for the season. one of the dump trucks tomorrow, but NDOT inspections for the season or for the year have been complete, all the, uh, PM stuff, preventive maintenance for everything, so we're ready to go for this season and the next one, which the way it fills is gonna be coming quicker than, than we need it to, but, um, that said, uh, and before I get to the leaf season stuff, I had a question, I guess, for, for Haas and, um, Sam had hit me up on, um, for next year's CCMG grant stuff. I know, I saw the state NDOT sent out the stuff, as far as by the end of this month, those wants or wishes need to be in. I don't know where the town sits on all that, we haven't had a chance to talk to you guys about that, but, uh, as I read it, for our small town, instead of the seventy-five, twenty-five, I think next year's eighty, twenty they're covering, so it's a bigger chunk.
Yes.
Just so you guys are aware, I don't know if you guys have seen that or not from NDOT, or if I, I don't remember if I forwarded it to you guys, but, so.
Right, and we're not, um, a large enough entity that we would have to implement the wheel tax, so for us, that's a good thing, um, because we don't have to raise taxes, so that's great, but, uh, but yes, it is an eighty, twenty match for next year.
Yeah, yeah, so, okay, just as long as you're aware.
To do projects.
I don't know where we're at on that, that's not, that's, but I want to make sure everybody's aware of that. Leaf season coming up begins Monday, the twenty-seventh, this next Monday. Um, we'll be out, we'll start hitting things, um, getting, getting through town and what have you. We are doing it, not contractors this year, as you guys know, but just so everybody understands, some of the rules, we'll go over real quick, because I'm already seeing some, some issues on some of the smaller piles, they're starting to get bigger, is the the leaves have to be leaves only. Sticks, limbs, branches, garbage, other odds and ends cannot be intermixed in there. This year, um, we're not gonna go digging through, we've done it in the past, we've sifted through a lot of that stuff and kind of kick stuff out of there when we, we don't, we're, I think, uh, we should have learned last year at the town show that the it's, it's very time consuming what's being done out there, there's a lot, it's a lot of physical, um, that has to be put into it, and, and we're not gonna, so they're, you're just gonna skip over those, those particular piles, and then we'll address that at another time when they call, or whatever that people want to do with residents, so. So separate it, leaves only, close as possible to that curb or to the edge of the road, so we can get to it, and, uh, and we'll be through. Um, as far as the machine, the machine's ready to go. Pretty squared away, I just got, a couple of days ago, got spare parts that we generally need, sometime about mid two-thirds of the way through the season. Those parts are in stock now, they're here, and I have them, so, so we're in good shape there, ready to go. This, again, October twenty-seventh through December fifth, that's what we have set, so. Other than that, unless you guys have questions for me, that's, that's rough and dirty, I guess.
Different question for you.
Sure.
You know, we've been texting or emailing back and forth on ditch maintenance. Can you, can this, we all, refresh my memory at least, um, what were the final rules on property ownership of the ditch behind Evergreen Plaza from Risky Ave all the way down, in, right, all the way down, uh, through Evergreen Plaza? Do we remember that? Property ownership.
I do, but I believe that we only researched immediately a certain section of that behind Evergreen, which when we did, went back and looked at those deeds, that those remained ownership, private ownership, not your ownership.
And that's directly behind Evergreen, isn't that correct? Yeah, the rest, I think, is, is ours.
By the dog, dog.
Dogs are under ours, and we, I was out there, and that's been knocked down, I think, hopefully you guys have seen, I don't know if you've seen that or not, but we put forth a pretty good effort, and, and that's been knocked down.
So then the big, the big ditch, the deep one, and that goes behind the other half of Evergreen, that's property, that belongs to Cora?
Again, I'm only speaking, I believe, to the that the east side, the, the easternmost side is what we looked at specifically before, so that entire, I don't know. I can, I can certainly look at that. We pulled the deeds to look back to see if there was ever an easement, because that became an issue, and a question asked to maintaining that ditch, et cetera, and so when we pulled those, there were no recorded easements, and in fact, stayed private.
Yeah, what's confusing is, back in the days again, um, that ditch, uh, back when I was a kid, had, they had a pipe in there, a big pipe, for drainage, uh, east of, um, was it? Red Oak, but, uh, then that was removed, uh, because of problems, complications, so they left that out and just left the ditch. So that's what's confusing is, uh, and I hope you can, you know, you dig into it, you find something eventually, uh, wherever the records are on that, because, um, I did, as again, I, some of the communications I've done already, I've, uh, communicated with the DNR biologist downstate and, uh, the water division downstate, uh, because there was some concern on, uh, the vegetation, if it's protected or anything. And, uh, according to those, to the biologist, that we're not, we're exempt as far as when it comes to removal of any vegetation, uh, so that shouldn't, if that comes into the picture, that, and I know you did some mowing and all that good stuff. If we got into, um, having to those, that larger ditch, if we had to, uh, go further, uh, we would have to essentially get a permit, if we had, if we were actually gonna be removing soil. But mowing, mowing's not a problem, but I'd really be nice if we can find out clearly who owns that, so if we can get it, or if someone else can get it, but it just looks trashy back there.
Well, again, that other part, we did definitively find that, but I don't, I haven't checked the entire expanse, so I can do that and report that.
Okay. All right, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing further, thank you, Dave. Okay, moving on, uh, do we have anything for NERC?
Hmm, I? I, um, attended a, a NERC meeting that, uh, had the, uh, electric vehicles on site at the headquarters, and it was interesting, they had a, I sat in a interceptor, they call it. Uh, it was one police car, and then they had a utility, um, truck, their pickup truck, that, uh, the county, certain counties using it, so they're out there, they're promoting, NERC is promoting. All electric vehicles. municipalities, uh, they're even, uh, telling me that there's, they have fire trucks that are electric, that's gotta be something to see, but, um, but the more common vehicles are the intercepts, or interceptors, and, uh, like our pickup truck, kinda, but it's just, I'm just throwing it out there, just something for review in the future when time comes. Seems like it was economically not too bad, because they have special, uh, grants and stuff like that, too, for, that they're promoting, so. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you, Warren. So we will, with that, move on to new business with the second budget reading this evening. And Crystal, I'll give you the floor.
And the values are there, so it's up for going tonight.
Okay, uh, so in your packet, you have the ordinance, um, for the second reading. We don't need to read each line, um, and then there's a signature page for the Form Four, or Form Four, yes. So if we can get a vote to vote on.
The values are all the same as they were advertised in the last meeting.
So we didn't make any changes from the first reading?
Okay. So we are voting on the budget as presented, um, at our September meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-six budget for the town of Trail Creek?
Motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and budget is passed.
Yay.
As a, as a reminder, council members, when you do sign this, please make sure to mark aye, and then sign your name. And I'll keep this over here, so we can sign that at the end of the meeting. Our MS Four invoice is next. Looks like Global Engineering has sent us an invoice for their work that they've done for us this year, um, doing the permits for the twenty-twenty-four, and all of the work up to now for twenty-twenty-five, for a total of five thousand seven hundred eighty-six dollars and seventy-six cents. Knowing what we know about the MS Four fund being in the negative, um, in a prior time, where would you suggest that we take that money from?
So we have, um, after fixing that, we also have a budget line for MS Four quarterly.
Okay.
Um, so after fixing the first one that, um, bill that we had, we just, you know, changed, rolled it over into the MS Four quarterly. Um, so there is a balance left in that budget for the remainder, three thousand seven hundred sixty-five ninety-six, so we just, um, are going to take it out of.
Can you take it from time? Okay, I was gonna say contractor services.
We're gonna take it out of the, um.
A transfer of the budget.
Budget, yeah, we're gonna do a transfer of the budget, and then we're gonna take it out of the engineering, not the contractor service out there, so.
Okay, so then we need a motion to pay this invoice for Global Engineering, um, taking some from the MS Four fund, and then transferring some from the engineering budget.
Motion.
Thank you, and do we have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ordinance seven dash twenty-twenty-five for the park additional appropriation. And Crystal, I'll give you the floor again.
Uh, this is just appropriation, we're going to take five thousand, um, total into the park fund. So this is money that has been earned.
This is their money that they earn from the Fall Festival, and you're putting it into the non-reverting fund? Okay. And I believe that we would need to waive the the, uh, rules for normally reading ordinance, because this would normally be first reading. Um, and since we have everybody present, we need a motion to waive that rule. So we need a motion to, to waive the rule first.
I move to waive the rule.
Further ordinance reading, thank you. So we got a motion and a second, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so then we can read ordinance number seven dash twenty-twenty-five, um, moving the funds that the park board earned from their recent festival into the non-reverting fund. Do we have a motion to move those funds?
Make a motion.
Thank you.
A second.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 And we have a unanimous vote, so that ordinance carries. And moving on to the Haas proposal for the asset management plan, is that what we're looking at?
This is doing just, just.
And so what this does is goes through all of our streets, and gives them a Pacer rating, correct?
So this proposal actually does not include updating the Pacer ratings for the individual roads, which is why it's, it's a much lower amount than what you would normally see.
Okay.
Um, NDOT doesn't require that that be done every year, it can be done on a two-year basis, so, um, we're just showing us not providing those services, uh, we don't think it's necessary to update it. Of course, if you wanted to, you could, but, um, we don't think that it's necessary, and so we're not showing it on there, but you still need to submit that along with various other documentation to NDOT to stay current, to be, um, eligible for the CCMG grant.
Okay. So this just is our pavement asset management plan, then?
That's right.
Okay.
Oh, and I would also mention to you that this must be submitted to NDOT by December first, in order to be eligible for next year's call.
Does anybody have any questions or comments? So time is of the essence with this, then, is what you're telling us, right?
Yes, uh, since we don't have to do the Pazer, it won't take us as much time, but it's still a good idea to get this underway as soon as you can.
Okay. So the cost for the scope of work is four thousand five hundred dollars and one lump sum. Um, we do have the funding to pay for that, correct? Okay, then I would ask for a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-five pavement asset management plan from Haas and Associates.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions from the council? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And finally, we have the Ruth Riley invoice for the work that they've done. Um, what, are they asking for the entire amount at once, or are we making a payment? How are we?
That was one question I had for Sam earlier, if I might jump in real quick. Or Ryan, I'm sorry.
Is this for the CCMG project?
Yes.
So they, the typical procedure is that they would submit to us a pay application, we would review it, confirm that it's uh, acceptable for payment, that they've completed the work that they say they have completed, and then we would come to this council and provide our recommendation for you to pay the contractor, so them submitting it directly to the council is sort of not the ordinary approach, so I'm not,
Okay.
I don't think we've even seen the invoice.
So if we can have a motion to table this invoice until further review by Haas and Associates?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions?
One other option might be, is that you could approve it subject to all of those receiving that, so it doesn't have.
Just in terms of delay and getting it paid, I don't know if there's anything on there, but may, you could make a motion to make it subject to receiving an appropriate recommendation to pay, and then it could get paid after, if, and that's assuming Haas can complete it. If they can't complete it before next month, then it comes back before you.
I will amend my motion to make it subject to approval by Haas and Associates.
Understood.
And I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? So it's an amended motion. Um, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Ryan, part of my question was, and you can see maybe after the meeting, that it does this contingency. Earlier, you were speaking about some of the things they had to finish up yet, and so um, I was explaining to the Quick Treasurer before the meeting what the contingency means, and when that gets paid, so I'm glad to hear that you'll still run through that part of the process. Um, the other question we did have was, this appears to be a final total, but obviously your further work then can confirm that. Uh, just as we look at the different funds that were set aside to pay the bills, um, as we get ready to allot that, so.
Yeah, if that's a final amount, I already noted that they have not completed all the work. We know that there's work right outside City Hall that hasn't been taken care of, so we wouldn't recommend full payment. What typically we would do is ask for a different pay application that showed a lower amount until they completed all of the required work, um, so, you know, that's probably what we'll do, but.
Yeah, we weren't planning on paying it, uh, till it was all done, we just wanted approval for the bill, so.
Fair enough. And we have nothing under old business, so do you have any public comment this evening? If so, I'd approach, ask that you approach the microphone, make sure that it's on, state your name and address for the record.
Carol Tashima, nineteen twenty-seven East Cool Spring. Uh, Warren saw my sad face, so he addressed the issue of the nineteen twenty-nine hoarder situation again. I, I just keep waiting to see what's going on. I've seen one possum and two raccoons over there, too, which I know everybody could have that in their yard, but before coming here today, I did watch the last three meetings to see if anything had been brought up that I missed, there's nothing, so.
Okay.
There are also two vehicles that are non-registered in the driveway, and according to Trail Creek standards, that's not supposed to be, so, I mean, there's just so many things that are an issue. I mean, that doesn't directly apply to me, but it just seems like things need to be addressed. And there's no, and there's no. need to be addressed. And there's no, and there's no, I don't see lights over there. Uh, I had to call the police department because he was coming over getting water out of my faucet, so I don't know if they have running water. I don't, I don't know what the situation is. It seems like it's deteriorating, so.
Okay. Thank you. We will try to address that as quickly as possible for you. Any other public comment this evening? And, and again, we'll ask you to do the same, is identify yourself and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I would say my name is Johnny Cash, but it doesn't work. So, Bonnabao, and I'm, I'm living on the 308 Edgemore Drive. Um, we have a couple issues with you guys. So, you know that sometimes we have storm in Indiana, like we have in Texas, but a little, a little less here. And we have branches debris and whatever that you guys should pick up. I don't know why, uh, the street department refused to take ours, maybe my haircut, or I don't know. But, um, we had a storm in, I think it was in March. Uh, you didn't, you, we put it on the street, not even our trees, the tree from a neighbor that fell on our property, we just took it out, we cut it in pieces, put it on the street, leave it there, no one showed up. Uh, we put it on Ruski instead of, uh, on Edgemore because it was easier. It was ea, it's easier for you to pick it up, too, because there's a room there you can handle, uh, better. Uh, long story short, uh, I asked you guys to pick it up. I went to the police, police sent me to you. I saw the, the street department, too. I called you, you forgot to call me back for two weeks. But okay, it's like that. It's, yeah, I, I get it. But okay, no problem. Um, so, not so long ago, the street department sent me, uh, and street department with no name and no person on it, just the street department, send me a letter with, um, all the rules of the, uh, of a city. So, an ST storm debris pickup. After a severe storm, SLB may be placed out of for, uh, non-cost pickup for two weeks following the event. Am I correct? Okay. No call is necessary, the street department will.
Just to make sure it's public comment, so that everything needs to be addressed to the council and so we're not interjecting with the audience.
Okay. So no call is necessary. Street department will assess and collect storm, storm-related debris during this time. Uh, just for memory, when that happened, uh, because you guys or someone decided that we cleared the wood and we put it on the street and we took advantage of that, which was absolutely not the case, and it's never the case. Um, I asked you guys to come over, say, okay, come over, and I show you what we put on the street, how we did it, where is the, everything debris from the storm, the which, the other part that is not from the storm that we are treating. Uh, no one wants to come over to see it, just declined to, to do it. Um, so after that, I got a letter from the police department that asked me to respond by email, which I did. And then I think you responded me that, oh, it's not the way to do it, blah, blah, blah. I'm just following the, the step that you asked me. So, these debris are still there. Um, if I really want to follow your rule, next storm, I will, I have way more than that, way more than that that I could put on the street. So, all the debris, the, the branches and these things that are on the street are not even from us. It's from a neighbor. We cut it, we took it out of our property, put it on the street. And I even cut the, the tree from the neighbor on her, in her yard, just to, to, for them to have it easy to, to handle it. And you guys pick it up. So you did it for that, for, for, uh, this person, but for me, no. So, is it discrimination? Or how, how do you guys handle? Or, I don't understand, really.
I didn't want to speak on behalf of the entire council. Um, however, it was my understanding that some of that was debris that you had caught from trees trimming, not just from storm damage.
No.
Um, and.
I, I.
If I may, I, I will clarify that it wasn't two weeks I didn't call you back. And I think you and I had spoken about that, that I didn't receive a voicemail from you, although you did say that you left one. So I don't have a, a reason, excuse me, why that wasn't on my phone. Otherwise, I would have called you back more expediently.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I, I believe that somebody said that they saw you cutting up tree, trees and trimming trees on your property, which is why we did not come to pick that up for you.
Okay, so.
And I know that we spoke also about an, an additional fee at that time even, which you, you had also blocked.
So what I, what I told you at that moment, and it's still like that, you can come over, you can see that we, what's on the street are branches that are cracked. Most of the time when we trim trees, I'm not that strong to crack branches out of the trees. Uh, I, most of the time use a chainsaw, it's easier. Um, and that's how it is. And I still have other trees that are on the property from the same, from the same time period. They're still there. You can come over whenever you want, whenever you want. And I can show you the difference from what we are trimming and from what was as a storm debris. And what's on the street is not from our, the, the only thing that we cut a little, it was just to have a way from, to go from the neighbor to the street. That's the only thing we cut. That's the only thing we did, just to, 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 my truck is good truck, but it doesn't climb on tree. So if we have to pass like that, we pass like that. I did it with my, I have a mini excavator, I did it with that, too. I use every tool that I have in, uh, at my disposition. And it's not even a tree from me, it's the one from the neighbor that you guys pick up. Uh, you pick it up on June 30. I have a photo of you of the street department doing it. So, guys, it's, it's so simple. It's just do your job. And it's, I don't ask for more, I don't ask for something special, I don't ask for, I don't ask anything. Just, the rule is, I think the rule is for, the same for everybody. And why is it different for me? I don't know.
I was just gonna say, I, I will certainly, um, share email correspondence and what the chief has in endure and sometimes regardless of whether it's merit, you'll see the tone of how some things have been approached as well, as well as my exchange, which is probably different than what was represented to you tonight.
Oh, I have a chair, you want me to read it?
You can do whatever you like.
I have a question. How many acres do you have behind your house, that wooded area?
Uh, I think three and a half.
So you have three and a half acres of property of, of trees that you expect when there's a storm to come through Trail Creek to take care of?
No.
All of, all this stuff that falls?
No.
Because I, I, I drive behind your home on a daily basis.
Good.
I see the four-foot hot, tall stack of branches and trees.
Four foot?
That you have, yeah, four foot.
Okay.
That you have stacked on Risky Ave that you expect Trail Creek to take care of?
These are not my tree. That was after the storm, and that's what we put on the street. If you really want me to put everything on the street, I do.
I actually have pictures on my phone of your property.
I got pictures, too.
And the trees that fell on your property that you cut off and stacked on Risky Ave, expecting Trail Creek to pick up.
No, that's untrue.
So I don't think that's fair for the rest of the taxpayers of Trail Creek.
No, that's unfair.
To have to pay, to have your property cleaned up.
No, it's not a clean up.
And that's one of the reasons why we created the ordinance, because people were taking advantage of the street department.
No. Well, I don't take advantage of the street department. You can show your photos whenever you want. The trees that are on the, on the street are the one that came from the neighbor and that was in the, and the other ones that were in the way.
I drove by, I took pictures.
I walked by, I drove by, too. I live there. So, now for your information, because you're thinking that I would take advantage of, of Trail Creek, um, we are working with a company to clear all the trees and to, uh, to cut everything and clear it because there's, most of them are a little cranky like me, so they, they don't look really good. And they, they are at the end of their life and they need to be renewed and re-cleaned. So we are working for a company, with a company from Shep Shewana, Michelle Walker or Shep Shewana, I don't remember. And I went to the street department two weeks ago. The street department should call me back, but nobody calls me back, but it's not a problem. So for your information, we are working on that. I don't put it on the street, I don't do anything. I just want you, the, the thing that's, the rule is the same for everybody. It's in my yard, not in the tree part, in the, in the, in the grass part, from the neighbor. We took it, we put it back on the, in the back street. We couldn't put it on front.
So the rule is the same for everyone and we have, and we have it by load, uh, uh?
But you did say that you cut a path through there, and that would not be our responsibility to take. You do understand that, correct?
That's, uh, two or three small trees that just, uh, I can draw, draw with my truck.
Doesn't, doesn't matter if it's two or three, or if it's 10 trees. If you cut it, then we, you know, that, that ordinance would still apply.
Okay, but I don't, so if I read what you sent to me, next time.
That would be part of it.
That's my yard, and next time I can, I can just follow the rule that you sent to me.
I'd like to give the street department chair a, a chance to respond to you.
Yeah, but they can come over. Guys, come over and see, and I show you. And I can show you where the trees that are cut and that, that are from the property, where it's stored and where it's, uh, just cut and put on the side, and where the difference is. And that's what I ask you guys, when it happened, directly, almost directly, a day after, two days after. Do you think that I, that I wake, wake up in the morning after a storm, say, hey, oh, I'm gonna take my chainsaw, I'm gonna clear my, my property?
I would certainly hope not, because that would be taking advantage of, of the rest of the town.
Yeah, but that'd mean that I would have a, a really good bag, and I would have a lot of time for that, at that moment.
I mean, there, there are some people who would do that. I'm not saying that you necessarily would, but there are some that would.
Yeah, but I'm not, I'm not the rest of the people.
And who, and definitely who have. So I'm not saying that you are, but I, the, the pile grew exponentially within the days after that storm. Would you agree?
Well, the pile is this, what we take off. I'm sorry, it's, I'm not responsible for the storm, and I'm not responsible for the trees, or for my trees, yes, but not for the, for the neighbor. And I, I, I took it off. I couldn't put in, I could put it on the, on the front of the street. I did it on the back because for me, in my, my stupid mind as construction engineer, it's easier to load there and then, and to have the machine and to do, to do the job. For me, I see it like that, and I did it like that. Of course, if you came directly, you could see directly what happened. And I could, and I still can show you where the difference is. I can show, I still have it, so, whenever you want.
Okay. So what would you like us to do here?
For me, clear what's, uh, what's on the street, just like other, uh, other people in Trail Creek. I have all the, the other, the list of what happened during the storm and where you, where you went. Probably not complete list, but, uh, there's already a bunch of, uh, of places. Just clear it. And if it's too much for you, or it's too big, or I don't know what, we can find a solution, we can work together, but don't say, you, you did it and you're un-honest and you're a cheater or whatever. No, it's, we're not like that. I don't want it. I just want to live quiet, in peace, and just enjoy my, uh, the rest of my life. I, I hope a little longer, but.
Okay. I think you look like you're intently looking for something.
Yeah, I, I am.
Does anyone else in the council have a comment on this? Okay. I, I need to give our street department chair an opportunity to respond to you, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
There were two pretty good storms this spring. The second would have been about June. We were moved from the front of your house on Edg, Edgemore right there. If you recall, the, uh, uh, three full loads directly from, from your property, right there, your stuff and along that front edge right there, that was all yours. Three, two dump truck loads and the dump trailer, strictly just from you. That, that was, those three trips to the county, one after the next, after the next, from that. It was beyond, it was after all that was cleared out, we went on, because it took us quite a while. If, uh, well, I think no Laura does, because she, she walks through town pretty good and let us know how, how good it finally starting to look through there, through Edgemore and, and, and all that stuff there. It took us quite a while to get through town after that, that last storm, that early June storm. We did that. Nothing showed up. Your stuff in the back started showing up after, I don't know if there's conversation maybe with, with you, or I don't know how, who, where it all went from there, whatever like that. But there was, uh, the stuff in the back on Risky Ave started getting built up. We'd already been over for a lot of stuff, a lot, huge trees from your stuff. So we, don't say we didn't do anything, we weren't doing anything, whatever. We did your stuff, we moved, we moved on, we had a whole, we have the whole town to hold on to take care of and all the rest of it. Fast forward, the, the phone calls that you say are the messages you left for me, I, I don't have, I have not received any messages from you. You did call the, the clerk's office, I believe, Julie, I think you spoke to. She briefly contacted me, said that you called asking about Risky Ave needing it closed and, because you're gonna have somebody coming out, cutting stuff, doing what you're gonna be doing. This was what, a week ago, I guess it was now. Everything I says, yeah, let him know, he's gonna have to contact Michigan City, because that's an emergency route. We use those, the police use those, the fire, EMS. Risky Ave, north to south, is an immediate passageway for, for Michigan City Police, for Trail Creek, for anybody else, fire, EMS and all that stuff. So you have to, you have to work that with Michigan City and with Steve here, with the chief. So those, that was what I left for her to contact to let you know. I don't know if you were standing right here when she called me, whatever else. We were out working, I believe, actually, at the park stuff, so.
Hold on a second. There, there can't be discussion here because it all has to be on the microphone for the public. It's required.
So, okay. That's, that, that's my, on the comments that were made, that's, that's what I'm just responding to there. We, we did pick up three full loads from in, in front of that house, and that's when we moved on to, to other, many, many other properties in Trail Creek, because a lot of stuff was down after that storm. So, beyond and the, the small stuff that's, that's being thrown out there now, stuff that even had, uh, green leaves on here just recently, it's not from that storm. So, perhaps some of it at some point maybe, but most recent stuff that still has li, live leaves, as it's dying land there, it's not from that storm. So, that's all I have unless, if you have, have questions.
Does the ordinance say front or back of the property? It doesn't specify? I mean, in this case, I don't think it would matter because.
To my knowledge, no, that doesn't matter. That doesn't apply. Yeah, that wouldn't matter to me. He is right, it'd be just as easy to do on Risky Ave, a little bit busy over there, but yeah, that's not, that's not the issue at all.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Willoughby, did you have something you wanted to add? You grabbed the mic there.
Um, no, I was just gonna suggest maybe take it under advisement, then you can send him a determination one way or the other, and what the fix is, if any. Then he can, he'll, he'll be happy with the decision or take whatever action he's threatened in the past.
Thank you for, for speaking before I could, uh, because that's what we'll have to do here. We can't really make a determination this evening on that.
Come over.
So. Okay. Any other public comments this evening? Hearing none, any comments from the clerk's office?
None.
Okay. Any council comments this evening?
Me? I'm sorry.
No, please.
I, I have four.
Okay.
Um, it's just, uh, a lot of this has to do with the website. Um, Thanksgiving, I, I know it's only October, but Thanksgiving, I am closed, I put on there that you're closed on Thursday. Are you gonna be closed on Friday like last year?
I believe that's in our, our handbook, to be closed weekdays.
Yeah.
I think it is.
Okay. And then also, the same thing on, this year Christmas falls on a Thursday, so you would be closed on Friday also. I mean, that's usually government offices are.
Yeah, we usually follow.
Yeah.
Whatever, Michigan City, La Porte, they kinda do.
Okay.
But in our handbook, I'll have to check.
It's specified in our handbook.
Yeah, I'll check that.
Okay. And then, um, that, can the ad for seasonal helper come down?
Sorry?
The ad for seasonal helper come down on the website?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Oh, that's okay. And then the only other thing I want to ask the council and ask Crystal too, um, so the yoga in the park is ending for the winter. Can we schedule it for the ti, in this room?
I don't see why we couldn't.
Oh, that's after that.
Okay.
As long as it doesn't conflict with any other meetings.
Yeah, we would take that into consideration. We would look at the calendar and get it, you know, on a.
And you guys would be able to move everything yourself and then.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yes.
And then, is there a, a size, um, a limit of people, you know, uh, fire or police?
That would be the, you're talking.
Yes.
Yeah, we would have to call the.
I didn't hear what you were doing.
Oh, we are gonna have an occupancy for yoga.
Oh, we could call the, um, fire department, they committed to an assessment.
Okay.
They actually assigned.
So you'll take care of that? Okay. Then that's good. Okay, and we'll figure it out and.
Okay.
It probably will be another month or so. But, okay, that's it.
Okay.
From me. Yep.
Any other council comments this evening?
I had one. Uh, just from working the, uh, from working the Fall Festival, I had many people coming up commenting on, uh, the police department and the parks, or, and the, uh, street department and just the great job that they do for the town. So I had multiple people coming and telling me awesome things that Officer Dick does and Dave does every day. So I appreciate you guys and so do the people of Tri, Trail Creek. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question that was, and we talked about it maybe last month or the month before. If we are interested in, um, correcting or improving or updating our front area here of the office where the old railroad ties was breaking down. I did begin to get one quote, uh, just to get an idea. to get an idea, and so I'm just throwing that out there, if we are interested, because we had some money left over, if you guys wanted me to pursue that, to get a second quote, third quote, just to get that updated, that's all repaired.
Council members? And what he's talking about is the area where the railroad ties are falling kind of over. I personally would like to see that happen.
I also would like to see another bid.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are we gonna be doing it? Are we gonna be putting it in, or? I've been doing a lot of different things lately.
I'm not going to volunteer you both, but if you, I don't know how much equipment that would take, so let's talk about that when we find out more information, then we can voluntold people.
I just, I would just need you guys to say, "Yeah, we'll get to it."
Yes, so...
Yeah, look into it.
We would need a formal motion for that, so.
Motion.
We'll make a motion to, for Warren to look into, a quote for repairing the...
The railroad ties?
And I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Warren, if you would get at least two quotes for that, that would be great, two more, beyond what you have.
Yeah, and I have another comment and question, and this might be for David. Previous discussion we had on that shelter we have at Condon, do we just wanna look in to see what's involved, if there, what utilities in there? I know there's electric, and what, what's required to remove that, so it's out of the way?
Yeah, we'll be a little bit busy here in about a week, so, but we'll take a look.
That's fine. Yeah, I know, just put it on your to-do list.
Yeah, we'll, we've talked about it.
Okay, and with that, I will remind everyone that Halloween, Trick or Treat will be on Halloween night from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. The police department, again, will be doing their outreach down at Nelson Park, and leaf pickup, thank you to Mr. Baker and his crew for doing leaf pickup, October 27th through December 5th. Please, again, make sure there are only leaves within those piles, that they're as close to the street as possible. Any sticks, limbs, branches, or other objects need to be out of those piles. And please do remember that you can use your second container for yard waste year-round, so if there's something that doesn't get picked up by the street department, you can always break up the sticks, limbs, branches that you can, and fit them into those garbage cans, although that's not going to help in the case that we have on Edgemore right now, so. It would be an awful lot of garbage cans lined up along the back. That said, do we have anything else? If not, I'll ask that everyone be safe and go slowly on Halloween, make sure our police department doesn't have extra work that evening, and everyone have a great month, we'll see you in November.
Move to adjourn.
Oh, we need to move to adjourn.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.